I'd like to call the planning board meeting of November 30th for order 702. We will not need an alternate. We do expect our chairman, Yoli Doutre, to be here shortly. Approval of the minutes of November 21st. Have you all had a chance to look at them?
I think most of them approved in the minutes of November 21st.
A second. Any discussion? I'm gonna let that ride. Olive Day. Minutes will be filed as approved. All done business. Who do we have here first tonight?
I'd like to take the agenda out of order and move Mr. Sterns up.
That was what I was asking. Yeah. Mr. Sterns, would you like to come forward, please? Join us.
Is it at the table?
Yep.
Yeah, right in front of us.
Now, we have the application as juda, which was a prior order, right?
I don't know. My mother is the owner of the Starns.
It's under a trust for an LLC though, isn't it?
Correct.
So it's West Wind LLC is what we'll have it as.
This is a best practical location application leveling the home and stabilizing the foundation. And we all at different times have been out there to see this. Gavin, did you get the opportunity?
No, I haven't made it up to the site.
Well, without you, not without Ken anyway.
Either way.
Yeah, we can't go otherwise.
I haven't been there.
Anyway. It's a lovely home, and I wish I remember the exact year. 19...
1900.
1900. You know, very original house. Great East. And been in the same family for generations.
Since 1930.
Since 1930. So, very nice piece of property. It's not often we see something like that come in. Usually we see a lot of cabs and things. This is, this is the old time lake house. And just by the virtue of its age, I think it needed a little sort of pad on the back there. It is a lovely place. And you'll want to stabilize it, basically.
How many sonotubes was it at the end of the day?
I believe there are about 40. Well, it is supported by approximately 40 piers right now.
No, no, no.
Level.
Not knowledge, but level.
So it's supported by about 40 piers right now. And I intend to replace probably two-thirds of them. Each pier is a steel column, and underneath the steel column is a small cement block, about the size of a cinder block. And those steel piers and cinder blocks have been replaced for about 30 years. And they are sinking.
The difference, what was the greatest difference in the area?
So in terms of the leveling?
Yeah.
So if, what we're trying to do is level the house, level the structure to the hearth. So if we say that that's zero, the worst place is minus eight inches, so down eight inches. And a good portion of the house is down between four and six. It is, we had an engineer come out a couple of years ago and give us a report. And he basically said the problem is likely to accelerate, and the structure itself will rapidly degrade unless it's stabilized.
How far is it from Great East now?
Replacing the columns underneath it. Why wouldn't you at this time replace all of them where some of them have been replaced recently?
No, they were essentially all replaced. From what I guess I can tell, they were all replaced 30 years ago. Some of them have not sunk. There's a wraparound porch on the structure. And so the roof of the wraparound porch doesn't have significant weight, so those have not degraded. Or if they're just down an inch or so, I'll just shim, shim an inch and be done. So anywhere where they seem stable and square and flat level, the concrete itself, I just want to leave right there. Prefer not to disturb it.
And what you want to do is a recommendation of the engineer that came up with it's a place?
Level, stabilize it.
The one you'll replace and...
Correct.
The one you don't need to replace.
Now, keep in mind too that in addition to the 40 or so piers, there's a center chimney in the structure. And the base foundation under that chimney is made up of all kinds of basically lake rocks and field stone, all cemented together. That base of that, the chimney is approximately six feet by 10 feet. So that's sitting right there in the middle of the structure. On the back corner of the structure is an outhouse built into the structure itself. And that's about a five-foot by 10-foot brick enclosure. So that in a sense is part of the existing. So if I, the outhouse brick enclosure is at level. And of course, the fireplace and the foundation of the fireplace is at level. So neither one of those have to move.
Six by 10 chimney base?
Six by 10 chimney base.
Five by 10 built-in outhouse.
Built-in outhouse. Built-in outhouse.
They would call it that. Climate controlled. Yes.
A lot of people are right. And I could point out from the picture above where the septic system is, can I think of that comes into play? If I could come up and show?
You should have a laser right there.
Do we have a laser right there?
Somebody took it away?
Yeah, it's away. Here, isn't this it?
Here you go.
Well, the picture went away.
Oh, the picture's gone now, Ken.
Okay, so this, the septic system is all up here over the, whatever you call it, the... Leash field. Leash field. It's all up here, up high on the hill. This is the pumping station. And so the pipe, the pipes go up this direction and then here. So they go across this back corner here. The distance between the pumping station and the closest point on the house is 14 feet. If you were, you can see if you were to move it back, you would encroach upon the pumping station there. And eventually you'll encroach upon the pipes that go up to...
Up to Leash Field.
So the pipes go right into this area right here.
And where's your driveway?
Driveway comes right down through here. And the, this, the back of the house right here is at grade or at zero, basically, let's say it's the zero point. Level of the hearth. And the grade begins gradually rising immediately behind the house for about 20 feet. And then it starts, goes steeply up the hill. So the hill will start right in this area right in here. So all this already has grid. So if you move it back, you'd have to excavate quite a bit of earth behind here. If you wanted to move it back even just 10 feet, you'd have to excavate some earth. If you wanted to move it back more than, let's say, 25, you'd have to take, you'd have to start cutting it up.
The, just leveling it, you'd have no elevation change of the structure?
No, no.
And no grade change at all on the soil?
No, we're not elevating the house. We're not building a foundation, we're not building a basement underneath it. We're not winterizing it. We're not enlarging it. We're not changing the look of the house. Our focus as, basically my great aunt and her daughter, the focus has been since 1930 on essentially preserving the house in its original condition as much as possible. I think the people who did come inside could see that that's, that's what we wanted to do, is preservation.
Yoli, hi. Thank you. I appreciate it. We are out of order on our thing, and this is for you to do it.
Every one of these are unique, what he can do or can't do, the neighbor over here could do and can't do. Where this is sonotubes only, I think we could look at it differently where it's not a foundation.
Right.
Usually the board would try to move it back a foot or two feet if you could. Where it's just the crosspost, sonotubes, it seems reasonable to look at the ability that he's trying to do here and just put crossposts underneath. If he whatever was to do a foundation underneath, he'd have to come back.
Then you have to come back. Do you have a picture of the host Ken on this one?
I have this one.
You have one too.
I brought this up.
Right, you brought that one.
Did you paint that?
I know, it was, I did not.
Okay. Say good job.
Because as a family for so many years, we have an incredible number of paintings and drawings of the house. And many of them, we don't know who did them, but they go back.
I did not.
So one thing I did notice too when I first got out of the truck was AY had been in with the... So the owners are cognizant of protecting the lake.
And also, I will point out, you may see in, you know, in the records that we did have some trees taken down about four or five years ago. And you wouldn't know it by walking around the house, but essentially there were a lot of large pine trees.
Looks like some of them in the picture there.
Was that?
Looks like some of them was in the picture.
Oh, actually, yes, that, well, yeah.
It's in our picture.
Yes, that is, that, that one is a dead one right in the front there.
The dead one.
So we took that one down. But, so we, you know, got our permit for that and did that all to, you know, to the permit. And we have proceeded with replantings and put in quite a few, or met the requirements for replantings. So we're definitely very protective of it.
When was the septic installed?
Well, I would say 15 years ago.
Was it that long ago?
Yes.
And then only be a four?
Yes. And it was both cottages, both the large camp and the cottage behind got, have separate...
They have separate tanks?
They have separate tanks, separate systems, yes. They didn't originally, but they do now.
How many bedrooms in the house?
We treat it as a four-bedroom. It's originally, it was originally built as a seven-bedroom. And with additional sleeping quarters up on the third floor.
But they have service.
Service people. And the small camp behind it, which is also in the family, was originally the carriage house.
Completely, you can tell looking at windows in these older houses, the smaller the window gets. Largest one on the first floor, second floor, servants' quarters get the smallest windows. Always, it's...
We have a, you might have noticed this, the people were out there, there's a little shed right out on the side there, which is actually the original ice house.
It's a lonely piece of property. Right in the front, is that, right here, what am I looking at?
The boat ramp?
The boat ramp.
Boat ramp, yeah. Probably put in in the 1940s.
Yeah. Now, there's a boat ramp on the other side.
There is a boat, a structure from, basically a foundation from a boathouse, yes.
But that's not in here.
Boat bay, yeah. Yeah, about where the number four is.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's right over, right over there.
Is that still in use?
No, it is, I actually talked to Ken about it when he came out. We would, it's, parts of it have caved in. It's a basic piece that's fallen in. And we talked about the possibility, you know, if we apply for a permit, might be able to remove, remove all that concrete, just to return it back to its original.
To, back to nature.
Back to nature, exactly. And one of the things too is we're, I know that some of the properties of the lake, you know, have cleared in front, all the trees out in front as much as they can, the underbrush and all that. We prefer to keep ours somewhat secluded and keep, you know, low hanging branches out front and keep it kind of blending into nature.
I would, I mean, obviously relocate in this place has the possibilities of being more detrimental to the lake than leaving it where it is.
Be detrimental to the house too.
Well, I mean, that's up to the people that are moving it. But I'm just saying, I think leaving it where it is is the best possible action to take.
I agree with that. It makes the most sense, especially with that fireplace in the center of the house. The fireplace and then the outhouse, yeah. Which is five by 10. You don't want to disturb that... You're gonna start moving it. The foundation of those structures. No. I would...
What are you referring to as the outhouse?
It's attached to the house.
In the back here?
In the back. It's attached. We call it an indoor-outdoor.
It's within the footprint of the house.
It's within the footprint. It's five by 10 for a taoji, does that make...
Probably eight feet.
It's not used anymore, is it?
It is.
You know, days like today, because we have no water, you know, we, so yes, we'd use it on weekends like this.
So can I ask what's, what this become before us? Does it, do they use a different percentage or something?
No, it's, they do use the foundation underneath, which in this case, sonotubes or crossbows.
Okay, just replacing the foundation. Not really even the foundations, just the sonotubes.
Which technically is a foundation.
Which technically is. When you, if you saw it, it's, you know...
So what were you saying about the septic and not being able to use the septic when it's cold?
Oh, the septic would work. We have, our water is pumped from the lake. So we take, we... There's no well. There's no well. We don't, we pull water out of the lake. And so we take that, we dismantle that when it gets cold. Are you looking at the old wells?
I don't know. I wouldn't know.
There are, there are...
It says it's a well.
Yes, a well.
But it's not a...
Yes, there is actually.
It's just an old stone well with, throw the bucket down, right there. Right towards 19...
Interesting.
195 feet, right in front of that.
I'd never do that. I know that there is an old well that was dug back here. But no, I've never, I've never seen that, never noticed that before.
So how do you pull the water from the lake?
We, we have Mr. Pumpkins on the house, and then we run a water line to the, into the lake.
So all you'd have to do is bury that? Or attach it to a well instead of a lake?
Oh, yes, if we wanted to dig a proper, dig a proper well, yes. We could do, we could do that.
That's quite common on the lakes. It is quite common.
To dig a well.
No.
But we would have to pull water from the lake, yes, because it's...
They all did that. Yeah, everyone did that. They did it at my house.
Yes, I mean, we used to have one of those...
Built in 1900s.
Yeah, you just took it out, yeah. We used to have a stone pump house. That was dismantled when they built the boathouse, unfortunately. But, and it was a steam-fired pump engine, you know, pump. And we have a tank up on the third floor, and they would pump it up to the third floor, and then gravity feed down to the kitchen.
Well, it seems like it would be advantageous to come up to the septic and things.
I think...
If he is hooked up to the septic, you'd think that you eliminate the outhouse.
But...
Discontinue it, Philip McDarrett.
Yeah, just what would you have to do in order to do that, I guess, is what I'm...
That's not why he's here, is it?
Well, I mean, you were saying that's one of the reasons they can't move it is because there's an outhouse attached to it.
Well, because that and, and the fireplace. And the fireplace, which is large.
I'm just going with the septic right now. I'm not talking about the structure.
Which the fireplace, they move houses like that all the time. They can slide it and put it underneath. But I would agree, we're just doing sonotubes. But we've got a base of findings of fact on the next house coming that's gonna say, I want to do heated, not move the house at all.
We'll take care of that.
So...
I don't, I don't, I don't agree with doing away with the outhouse.
I don't either. It's part of the structure.
I really don't.
Well, he's saying he would be using it today, so that's something I'd like to, if you have a proper septic that's further from the lake, he would encourage the advocate to use the septic.
But if he has his house winterized, because they're not there all the time, and he's here because... He is here because he's coming to us. So what's he supposed to do?
One person to do it.
No, what I'm saying, you winterize...
It's a two-holder, by the way, so you can't...
So, I mean, you know, you winterize your house for the winter if you're not gonna be here. And then you find yourself coming up here for a reason.
Like this.
Like this, for a day or two.
Do you gonna be insulating the floor when you do this? Put some foam board underneath the floor?
It's a consideration. We have...
So it sounds like they're gonna be doing some winterization anyway. I would definitely encourage that we got it so that they can use the septic in the wintertime.
I don't, I don't think we should be putting that in as a stipulation. I don't think it's in our, in our domain to say that they have to do this. If they don't want to winterize the place so they can, I mean, year-round. I mean, we can't say, okay, now you're gonna spend the money to winterize the place because you want to put some columns underneath the house.
Yeah, but you wouldn't have to winterize it. But it is within our guidelines to make sure they have a state-approved system, which they do.
They do.
But they're really not using it at some times. Yeah, I agree with Gavin on this one. And I think you should fill it with dirt and stop contaminating not only the lake, but the drinking wells within that scope.
Well, either goes to bathroom in there, or it goes out bathroom out, on the front yard.
No, you would use the septic, did you, or did you?
No, it's not working.
Well, you would make it work. That's what we're saying.
So in order to, just, I'm not really familiar with how you would get toilets to work and a septic system to work without water.
Well, that's what we're saying. You'd probably want to, you know, hook up your system.
Or just love your water. Just love your water. At this point, five gallon bucket.
Right, just pour it in the toilet and flush it down to the stuff.
That's a pump system?
Yes, it is.
Dumped it to a pump. So you're just gravitating to the pump tank behind you.
And then, okay, I mean, sure, that's doable.
Yeah, and then some septic.
Well, it seems simpler than moving the whole structure.
Okay.
I mean, we're just trying to look for some improvements here.
Okay.
I would definitely not want to see the structure moved. I think it would be an environmental mess, frankly.
But we move...
I know.
We move everyone.
We move every...
As many as look at the size of the lot, we move. It's the size of the lot.
Gavin, I walked the lot. I walked it, so I know it's there.
I have a piece of paper in front of it, shows the size.
I know, I know. But what, what... Sometimes the piece of paper doesn't give you the full picture.
I can put it in front of you if you want. That's a huge lot for what we usually deal with. This is a huge lot. There's another picture of that, and we deal with things that are like 20% slow, and we push them right into the...
There's an easy 20 feet to move this back.
You could totally move this thing back.
We just want to have some good findings of why we did not.
I walk the property, so I know what it looks like.
I'm looking at this.
That doesn't make a difference.
That's why we took you first.
I'm looking at this.
I don't know. I've never taken one of these before.
I'm just looking at this. Almost as a historic site.
Well, if it's not on the historic register, it's not a historic site.
No, no, that's not true.
Well, it is, because we've done, I've done dozens of best possible locations. This is a big lot. We always push him back. If he doesn't want to move back, he's gotta make some improvements.
We've gotta, he has to do what the board tells him to do, not what Gavin tells him to do.
Okay, I think we need to do is...
I'm just going in fairness to all the other best practical locations we've done before this, and we always push them back, so...
We need to go forward, and I'm not one to feel you look at apples and oranges and say they're all the same. There are reasons for things happening in every single best practical location we see, okay? But I think we need, there are other things that I would personally, that I see. That boat ramp with the fallen in business, I'd like to see that concrete out of there and bring that back to a natural state. I think getting that, that concrete that's falling into the lake is more of an issue for me. One of the questions I have about winterizing is you winterize your house for the winter. You're basically shutting it down. So if there's some reason you have to come up for one day or two days in the winter, are you gonna call a plumber and say, get my house going up again?
You wouldn't be able to actually.
You wouldn't be able to. You wouldn't be able even to get into the house, I would imagine.
We couldn't get the water to run.
And you couldn't get the water to run. So I'm not as concerned about that. And maybe because I'm older than some of you, the idea of carrying a five gallon bucket in with me is like... I have done it. And it is... Oh, yeah, I know. It can be done. It is not, it's not a, it's a task that I certainly wouldn't want to go through. And I certainly wouldn't want to force someone else to do under there. That's, that's another view of looking at it.
Do it in a happy place.
Yeah, that's the option. Do that, move it back.
But... I'm in agreement with Joyce is that I see the, the foundation, the old oak... How was that? Foundation as being a bigger plumb. Yeah. I think it's a much bigger one. How many times realistically, honestly, do you come up here in the winter?
Three, four per weekend. And talk about, you know, pulling water from the lake and using the septic. That is totally doable, in my mind.
I'm not sure why we couldn't run a line to existing well and just use that water.
If you're only using it three times a year, I just melt snow like water. If I was gonna, I would use it much more than that. It's a shame when you see a lot of these places not used all winter. But you could do a line under the, under the ground, tie in the well or any of that stuff, sure. And do a low-grade curb stock and just, you'd be turning water up in there. But to me, that's not our issue. My only issue is we need some good findings of why we're not moving this back. So in the minutes, we'll have that, because the next one, one of the next ones we have come up, the, he wanted to move it back. He did not want to move his back three, four years ago. And when somebody else in the neighborhood did this, he came in and said, I want to do what he did. I want to see the minutes to that, and we sent him the video to the link. And it was apples and oranges. He had a big lot. The other gentleman didn't eat. He was 30 feet from the road. There was no place to move him back.
That's what I mean, you know.
Here we have a big lot, so we've got to have some good reasons why we're not moving this back.
They're apples and oranges.
Sonotubes. It is just the sonotube base.
It's just the sonotubes that they're doing. You know, you're not digging anything out, or you're not doing any of that.
Not excavating anything underneath, no.
No excavation, no securing the house. So there's less disturbing of the soil around it and...
So there's less disturbing of the soil around it and.
But that's everybody's excuse why they don't want to move it back. Nobody wants to move it back.
Hit the D E P, they'll get, they say, push it back. We have this every time. We're like, oh no, it would be too much to dig into the hill. The D E P says, push it back as much as you can. We've been through this tons of times.
But most times, it's a full foundation.
It's a full foundation.
Yeah.
You know, so this case, it is sonotubes, and I wouldn't look at it as, did you say thirty-eight or something like that?
Did you say a lake?
No, uh, sonotubes.
Yeah, um.
Thirty, forty, two-thirds. I'd look, I wouldn't restrict him on that, I'd consider all of them.
It's not an addition, it's not new, it's a repair.
And I, I know that there are stuff in the, um, you know, in the ordinances about a structure that is an unsafe property. I mean, ultimately, this is gonna become an unsafe property. And that, in a sense, in the other word, it says, nothing shall prevent strength from restoring to, you know, safe condition. In a sense, that's much of what we're doing.
No, what we're doing is installing thirty-eight sonotubes underneath your camp. We're doing a foundation, which is going to keep that camp in that location for the next fifty years. And the state looks at that as, when you're doing a foundation, now's the time to relocate it, because you're not gonna get another bite at this apple for many years. And again, it's just sonotubes. It's not as detrimental as a full foundation.
Well, I still am of a feeling that, leave it where it is, do the sonotube, it's less disturbing of the environment around it. Tie into the well, as Ken had said.
No, I didn't say tie into the well. I said like water.
Like water. He's like an autark.
Well, well water.
Well water, yeah, well water, whatever it is.
We were talking discontinuing the outhouse, though, when we made the outhouse.
And.
I'm not willing to die on the outhouse.
No, and I don't.
You know what I mean? And I don't think you are, really.
I mean, I'm sorry?
I said, I'm not willing to die on the, the fact of the outhouse, that we gotta do away with it, we gotta do away with it.
When you say do away with it, do you mean just fill it in? It's still there, it's still part of the structure?
Right.
It has to take off.
Right. And that way, there's nothing leaching into the ground, leaching into the lake. So it's not usable anymore. It can be a conversation piece, but not a facility. Because.
Oh, I definitely see it, sir.
Oh, yeah. Definitely, definitely, but.
You didn't see the pictures in there, though, did you?
There must be.
Oh, my great, I'm just sorry, my great uncle, when I was a kid and we'd go up there, my great uncle had put kind of like nineteen forties Playboy pictures, Marilyn Monroe kind of stuff. There's.
Still there?
Uh, yes, so.
See, it is historic.
That's right.
World War Two pickups.
That's exactly what they are.
Were you thinking of something with the boat ramp?
Uh, yeah, that, that is what really, um, honestly say bothers me most, is.
You have to go through D E P to do that.
They'd need a P P I for that, yeah, that's easy.
Uh, yeah, I mean, it, it almost looks like, speaking of World War Two, it almost looks like a bummer that's collapsed on itself.
When you talk about the boat, the boat.
The old boat house with all the.
The, the ramp, this would be, actually, this is very stable, other than a few, um, rocks, um, right behind, right down the waterline. This is actually very stable. It's the other.
It's the other one I'm talking about.
The one that we were talking about.
The collapsed. It collapsed in on itself. That's what, I'd like to see all that out of there, if, if that's.
I mean, I, if, if that's a stipulation, I would, I would welcome that, and, and I'm sure that my family would be happy to, um, watch.
Get that out.
Yeah.
Are you thinking anything with this ramp, or are you vegetating that ramp?
Well, that ramp should be revegetated to some point. I mean, is this the boat ramping use?
Um, well, that's an access to the water. We take our sunfish down, you know, we launch our sunfish off of that. It's probably been there since nineteen forty, and it is, uh, it, it is all, all the dry section in this picture, it is very stable. There's no, no friction there.
Well, that's so much as, it's impervious.
Yeah, yeah, when the stormwater hits it, it's.
When the stormwater hits it, it's.
Okay, comes right, yeah, it can freeze right on.
Yeah, yeah.
Increases the water temperature of it, too.
Yeah.
But if that was just vegetated, you could still access the lake through it, even if it was just from above the waterline taking.
Right, just taking a dozen papers out.
When anyone was in, did they say anything about that?
Uh, not that I recall. I don't think that was part of the conversation. The, the issue was the runoff coming down the driveway.
Right, and you had the, you have those.
Yes, we had the cross, and we bring it into, like, it's like a low area. Rubber bar. The razor bar. And we bring it into a, we direct all that into a low area behind the ice house. So it basically pools down in the low area, does not go into the lake. So anything coming off of the hillside does not really come down. There'll be some stuff, some water that comes right, right above this ramp here that comes down, but it's not anything really from the hillside. Now it goes behind the ice house.
So when they were running, did they walk the whole property, or did they just concentrate on that one area?
Honestly, I don't, I, we brought them in for that one area, and I don't know. But I would be very happy to have them come back out and to, to do an evaluation of the entire property and give us their recommendations, and we'd be happy to follow through with their recommendations.
We usually recommend York County water and soil, so we've been dealt with.
In, in terms of.
Revegetation.
Revegetation.
Okay, say, York County?
Water and soil. The foam will be on the permit, hopefully.
Um, in, in order to take out the, um, old boat house foundation, that would be, you say there's an application you'd have to file with the state name?
Yep.
What kind of access is there to that now? Is there like a little walking path or driveway?
Um, it's actually, it'd be accessible from the neighbor's driveway. It's really right on the edge of the property.
Yeah, I got a review on the map, on the driveway.
Yes, we would come right down the, their driveway, and it's right, it's right there in front of the property.
This side is family as well, is it? The neighbors on this side, are they family as well?
No, not our family, no.
No.
This one is.
But the other side is?
Uh, the, the, yes, the one above, the small residential camp up above is family as well.
That's family as well, okay. But you can.
Um, the, the neighbors to this side of, we would certainly let us use their driveway with some, you know, modest construction equipment, no doubt. To, you know, to move those.
Okay.
So the concessions that would be asking for would be vegetation down where the boat launch is. And doing away with the outhouse.
Capping, yeah.
Capping. Was there another one there?
Um, what did they call the boat house? It's something on the plan.
Boat bay.
Boat bay.
Boat bay.
Or just continue the same verbiage, so.
And so, removal of the boat bay and revegetation over there?
Yeah, probably there's gonna be some riprap or something like that on that shoreline.
Just to be clear, the, what we call it, the, the, there's a boat launch or the ramp, the concrete ramp? Is that part of the concession that you're asking?
For revegetation.
This, this here?
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like.
And you call that, you call that the boat ramp?
We call the boat ramp.
Okay, some revegetation there.
I'm thinking about from this grass line.
Yeah, yeah.
Rip them on the watermark there.
From the high watermark.
Okay, and so, and you think that, uh, York County water and soil would make good recommendations to try to deal, deal with that?
Yep.
But still, with the erosion control, mild stump grinding and stuff, you'd still be able to access it if you needed to.
Yeah, there'd be plenty of water for you to get, get into the water.
Okay.
Especially with how, the condition it's in once you get into the water.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, you mentioned capping the outhouse. What does that mean exactly?
Uh, myself, I think I'd have it pumped out and fill it with sand. Is that what you're thinking, Gavin?
No.
Yeah, that'd be nice to clean it out. It'd be a good idea somehow, I mean.
It's, it's just, it is solid dirt underneath there. There's no.
What have you been adding with the excrement?
Um, we'll go.
Sand dust or leaves or?
Uh, lime, we buy bags of the, you know, lime pellets.
So it should be fairly soft material still, not too rubbley or anything?
Uh, basically solid clay dirt is what it is. There's.
Packed dirt.
Packed. There's no, um, you know, it's not like you could, you know, there's no liquid in there.
You couldn't draw.
But it would be more like compost than rubble, you know what I mean? There's no rocks that they couldn't suck out of there, so.
Suck it out of dirt, compost.
I mean, if, if you call somebody one of the honey wagons in town, they could go in and suck it all up?
I think that's a good idea.
Something like that? And, and then fill it with.
That would reduce the phosphorus load.
It would, it would, absolutely.
As best we could, yeah.
Yeah, and then, but fill it with sand.
That's reasonable.
And the back camp, what kind of a septic system do you have in the back here?
That's a separate parcel.
That's a separate parcel altogether, and it has its own.
It was originally one parcel, and they've broken it off with the two houses. Are they both, uh, have the same amount of use just in the summer and not winter? Or people live there year-round or?
No, year-round. No, neither one of them are winterized. Um, and so I, as I mentioned, we go maybe three or four times in the, in the winter. And the majority of the time of, majority of this three or four, we're gonna be staying up in the small house, because that's, it's got a popular stove and it can.
Easy to eat.
Easy to eat, smaller space.
Sleep in the living room kind of thing. The big house is extreme, it's not heated.
Yeah, I was just thinking, you could probably access the septic at the back camp readily to save yourself, you know, flooding that water, so to speak.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Do we have further discussion? There hasn't really been a lot of concrete facts on why not to move it up.
We don't see very many sonotubes being installed under camps. Most of them are full foundations.
Any more temporary?
They're permanent.
They're permanent, right.
But where it's on, sonotubes, it's much hotter to heat, uh, the floors aren't insulated. The whole camp is three-season, basically. It's all open studs. There's no insulation, any walls, any ceiling, anything, so. It is definitely a seasonal camp. Uh, and you could maybe make that as a condition if somebody wanted to, uh.
That would stay seasonal.
And it is a two-story home. I don't think very often we see two-story homes. Uh, most times, people are putting it into a dumpster and building a grain mill, and in this case, it's good.
Actually, it's three stories.
Bedrooms on the third floor.
Bedrooms on the third floor, it's three stories, so.
Third floor, under the eaves.
Under the eaves, yeah, it's three stories. Okay, so, Leslie? Reasons for leaving it?
What's that?
Reasons for leaving it?
I wouldn't want to move it for the fact of the fireplace and the, um, because it's the center of the house.
Well, it is.
Yeah, they, uh, if you wanted to move it, they'd just throw out a couple of beams so that they can raise it up, just like everything else.
Well, you just sort of understood that you would basically side beam underneath it, um, you have to remove all of the.
Yep, drill it, block it, whatever, yeah.
And, and then, basically, you move it and you rebuild a whole new foundation for the chimney.
Correct.
Right, because you're not, you can't move the foundation of the chimney. You're just moving, essentially, from the hearth up.
Correct. And stabilize it, so. That's if we were picking this and moving it.
If we were making it more disruptive, then.
And, and, and again, that also would include the outhouse, because the outhouse is part of that foundation in that corner of the house, so that would.
It would be too hard to lift up the outhouse, too.
Well, it's part of the house. Yeah, it's, it's that corner of the house. So, Dennis?
I just think that, uh, what the concessions were asking for, um, obviously, there's gonna be less, um, runoff into the lake, less pollution to the lake, doing away with the outhouse, um.
No elevation change.
No elevation change.
Seasonal coverage.
I, I, I just see no reason.
Re-veg plan.
Yeah, I, I see no reason to, to move it. I, I realize what, you know, what you were saying, Gavin, well, we're supposed to move them back as far as we can, um, but sometimes it isn't common sense. You know what I mean? It just doesn't make any sense.
This is government regulations. It's not supposed to.
Yeah, we don't take that, but, but in the same token.
You look at the integrity of the person that's doing this, uh, because, as far as I'm concerned, anyway, could just easily use what he had there and just kept shimming. And what we'd have been the wisest.
The wisest one.
That was, we've talked about that earlier, and he has kept shimming, but the existing footings, it did just be intrepid into me.
No, I do, I understand, again, but I'm, I'm just saying, you know, they put the steel beams in there and this and that, and he wants to do it and do it right.
Yep.
And.
And who would have been the wiser if he chose to not do it right? So, you know, he didn't choose to go that route.
Oh, we saw the subject construction from the boat a month ago, so, so, but we knew there was something going on, so.
No, I'd just say it would be more detrimental for the lake to move it than leaving it.
You would get it first, the harbor master.
Just for the record, I was against buying that boat.
What's highest? It's thirty-three feet from the water, too. If we were seventy-five, we could say, you know, we're already seventy-five, how much better are we gonna get?
Right, right.
We could have, we could have D E P look at it.
How do you feel about concessions of maintaining seasonal, uh, um, tubes?
That we, um, we have no plan whatsoever to winterize this structure. It would be an incredible expense, and it would change the character so far.
The inside is more like an Adirondack-type camp, you know, open walls and.
Open studs, yeah.
Open studs and that sort of thing.
And pine paneling everywhere. I mean, it would be, you couldn't maintain the character and winterize. You'd pretty much have to cut, I couldn't, I, yeah, I mean, it would be a huge, it'd be like, you know, a house down on, on the point. They're basically just down, four or five camps down from us, Bill Greus' camp, they're winterizing that one. And that's gotta be huge, huge project. We have no intention.
I mean, that's my basis of saying about this being an historic structure. It is because it is old and, 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 and it's built for the times, you know, like any old building. And they have worked very hard to preserve that historic part of that building, um, the history of the building. Uh, that's obvious. And I live in support of it underneath. I didn't look right off to leave it right where it is.
So I came in on you saying that if it was gonna be, take down the road, if you were gonna be doing a full foundation, then you'd be looking for sure coming back?
It'd be coming back.
If they do, you would have to bet.
Maybe he's gonna do a conversion tour. Maybe he's going to do a conversion towards year-round home. Does that even go back?
You'd have to come back for almost anything, you know, a, a enclosed foundation or...
I mean, the less disturbance there is on, on the, in the shoreline district, the better off you are.
That's what we face with every single one of these though. We're always dealing with that. They move it back twenty feet, they got to cut down ten trees, dig out half the hill, haul it away. I mean, we've done this so many times.
Right.
That's not really consideration unfortunately. It's more of a long-term effect, not the short term. Instead of being relocated in a better location for stormwater from then on, you know? We've been, I mean, Ken remembers me going through this.
But that's, that's what he's doing.
A lot, but...
But that's what he's doing.
But he is making...
It's affecting the long-term impact on the lake. Like what we were asking to do, it, it, it's decreasing the impact.
Well, maybe we should have D E P. Look at it or give us some advice. I mean, I know what they'd say, but...
I...
Takes a month to get a phone call.
You can't, I, I, I mean, I so understand.
Next year, anyway.
Yeah, and, and...
Oh, no, he's, he's under there working.
Oh, he's working on it right now?
Yeah.
Well...
The only other thing would be a vegetated buffer added to the front of that.
Yeah, I, I don't think...
Some more, uh, not necessarily giant trees, but bushes and shrubs planted in the front.
The treble and trenches, is that what you thought?
No, that's done.
He said, well, the economy will slow them all things up.
Yeah, but that's it. So let's just see what, what they come up with.
Okay.
Okay.
And whatever they say is what it is.
The experts at it, yeah, right.
Right, that's what D E P. is for.
D E P. can't even answer a telephone. It, it's so bad right now. And I think that is an undue burden to put on an applicant saying, well, can you wait four months, five months?
Wouldn't be the first time we asked D E P.
But doesn't, it doesn't, no, it doesn't matter if it's the first time or the fifth time.
Well, we want to keep it fairness to all the other people who've gone through this process and, you know, that's all.
Things change, yeah. I do, I do know, I know.
We try to keep it consistent because our favorite people have already been through the process.
But, all right. Do you think we're ready to wrap this up with some conditions?
Yeah, I'll abstain since I understand.
Okay, all right. So can I have a motion, please? On this side of the room?
I'll make a motion that we, I don't know, I guess it's...
Approve.
We approve the best practical location.
And the location that it is?
It is with the following, um, would be concessions again. Is that what I heard?
Well, the findings is when, when we lay out it in the minutes, we'll have the findings were, there's a two-story home, the six-by-ten chimney, the outhouse will take off there. Discontinuing the outhouse, filling it with sand, York County water and soil, with the re-veg plan, re-vegging the boat ramp and boat bay, probably end up being rip-rap. It's going to remain seasonal conversion. We'll look at a vegetated buffer. No elevation change and no grade change was the reasons why we didn't move it back. You guys didn't move it back.
And how about the...
Sauna tubes issue.
The drainage runoff from the roof.
The treble and trenches.
Yeah, that'll be part of the vegetated plan from York County.
Okay. And that's my motion.
Second.
Make it, yeah. You love a good job. You want it pinned back, cool, I don't use it.
We got like glasses.
Either, is there any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? All opposed? Abstaining? And why are you abstaining?
I didn't make the sidewalk.
Okay, thank you. So we are three, zero, zero.
Two. Three, zero, two?
Three.
Is that the wrong?
No, no, three, zero, because she wasn't here, didn't make the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Gavin didn't make the sidewalk.
So that's two.
That's, okay, two.
Three, four. We're still, he's zero again.
Yeah, right.
Two abstains.
You got it.
He's zero, two.
Brenda's going to be after me on that stuff.
Oh, I've got, I've got a full list of notes up here.
And you put the reason in, can it...
And, and these reasons, these will be on the document.
Document, put your statement.
Yeah, the reason that they're abstaining. That's why I asked them. We have to give the reason.
Okay, thank you very much.
You've got two more if you want to stay.
This was actually very interesting. I might, I might be dancing.
You had no idea?
They didn't show up to defend themselves.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a easier, because they was back.
I, I guess the one thing I, I would like to know, it's under Judith Sterns, but it is Westwood's, uh, state.
That's what I turned it to, yeah.
But I know you're not Judith.
I'm Robert. Judith's my mother.
Okay, so you're Robert Sterns. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, everyone.
I should have asked you that first, but...
Which lane is it?
Are you driving back tonight or are you staying?
I know, I'm going to stay at the house tonight.
They have a little ride.
Carry the buckets of water. You start now.
Thank you.
So thank you very much, everyone. And for those who came out, I'm glad you came out, just so.
Beautiful place.
Yeah, it, it really is a beautiful place.
So it's not so level as to, uh, agenda?
Level like a, a tool level.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, level is in demo.
Yeah, right, that was. Sorry?
Yeah. He's going to sit next to you.
Okay, um...
One ten, go down the street.
From the bottom up, yeah.
From the bottom up?
Keep it interesting.
Yeah.
So do you, you guys all did walk through it, please?
Yeah, twice.
Twice, yeah. Well, you did it twice. He did it twice.
Yeah.
He went a morning, morning walk and an afternoon walk, okay. So you, you said you wanted to go the other way, so...
Timlin.
Yes, Bonnie and Jonathan Timlin, sixty-two Timlin Road, map one, ten, lot zero, three, nine. Application to demo existing camp and build a new home within the allowable thirty percent expansion with a full foundation.
So originally they were proposing, I'm going to have Dennis read this to me, it was last, it's moving it back about five feet, forty-nine to fifty-four. We went out and looked at the site, and there was a big hill behind there, but, uh, this is a demo we built too.
Oh, yeah.
So it's starting over?
Starting over, so it's not as restrictive as that last one where he's just trying to, to shure it up a little bit. Um, they only wanted to move it back when we took a look at it. That's one reason we went out is we thought there was a little bit more room. I talked to the contractor. He thought, uh, they could get back seventy-five feet. Originally they were proposing from the lake fifty-four.
So now we're twenty-one feet.
So now the twenty-one, and that's about what we were looking at back there.
That's about what we measured out.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, you, you had put the, uh...
The twenty feet.
The ribbons back there.
The ribbons in, yeah.
Did they think they'd want to move it towards the driveway more?
No, I think they're tucking it right there.
Tucking it right there.
Yeah.
Really, fine.
And there's that big rock in the back, and we'll look to see if that becomes a problem when...
I think that's probably the known landscape up in that area. That's just a big rock.
Yep, yep.
We have their... So what else is behind them that they'd be doing?
There's a septic back there and, um, there's two houses on the property. This is the one we were looking at.
Right.
Yeah, so demoing this all out. Currently that's hit right there.
Yes.
You come down the driveway here and that was right there. It looks like a huge area to move it back there, but we're thinking just into this hill, right into this area. That's the existing septic system now for, uh, this cottage down here. There's a cottage there, a cottage there, and a garage right there. So they didn't want to go into the hill, but it looked reasonable for us to tuck it in the hill. I don't think there was really any trees back there. Small, small vegetation or something like that.
Just scrub, yeah, there was nothing there.
Just, uh, some bright bushes, other small bushes and a groundhog.
Yeah, and a groundhog.
Yeah.
Would open up the front of the house too for more sunlight, yeah.
Yep.
But he was up above. He, the groundhog was up on here.
Isn't that with, um, mountain lions?
No.
So very limited grade change on that one as well. Um, the restrictions, once you keep going back, that would be the septic now. Telephone pole. They may have to relocate the shed that's back there.
The existing shed.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's sort of behind the house now.
Yeah.
Yeah. Again, we'd have to work with York County water and soil for vegetated plan.
Does this, this say they're going to be moving their septic closer to the lake?
Uh, that's a new septic they're installing.
Oh, it's a second one. They're not going to move it yet, sort of saying.
Right.
Getting that pole.
Why?
Uh, the first one's only designed for the one house.
Oh, it's for the second house.
Yeah, and I would imagine that's going to stay seasonal, or this is going to be more of a year-round.
So the, uh, can the purple septic goes with the second camp?
The little, the one that's in the same color as the crosshatch.
Right, the pink goes with the pink.
Yes.
But the purple?
Yeah, so that one goes with this one. That new one goes with...
Right, where's this one go?
No, that one's going to come down for this camp.
Okay. But it's, it's not attached to the camp right now?
I believe it is.
Okay.
So they moved back twenty-one feet.
Uh, no closer than seventy-five.
Definitely no closer than seventy-five. Now where's the road or the driveway?
Uh, driveway comes into here.
Okay, so the road's really not into it?
Yeah, there's one behind it. That's just another driveway.
Yeah, but it's more than fifty feet.
Yeah.
In the stretch.
Exactly. It's got eighty-four on it, so we updated that other one. That's the older plan. That was version one.
This one?
Yes.
Right, this one shows, yeah, this, which was around here.
Right.
These ones, this one's completely different.
I see, yeah. Then they want us to roll it down. Which is good?
Yeah.
I think this is where they also want the shoreline.
It's got good vegetation. It's like a pine grove in there and stuff, but again, we'll have York County water and soil. We're going to plan with them and...
So there's no need to bring up anything like that?
No.
There doesn't seem to be anything going really down to it. There's a little, so there's, there's, there's a little, but I mean, it doesn't look like it's more than a walkway, does it?
I mean, you could put a canoe in it, it's a great...
Well, he obviously has a boat port out there, so...
We're assuming it puts it in at the public pool.
Public pool.
That whole theory, yeah.
Yeah, that one would, but I mean, yeah, he could take a canoe or kayak, walking down that path.
Was it sand though? Did you put cement in it?
No, no, but I'm sure this is the low point everywhere. It's kind of funneling down and through there. So that'll be part of the revegetation plan, yeah.
Didn't hear you.
Beer cans?
They washed it.
Now they're playing that new game that I heard about last summer. Stick the, these, like, stick these poles in the water that have a table.
This is a fancy TV program.
That's okay. They have a tabletop on...
And my granddaughter's here.
Yeah, that's okay. She's fine.
She's very sensitive.
And, uh, they put a beer can on them and they play ring toss. And they can't knock the beer cans over.
Are you the champion?
No, I don't drink beer, but it does seem to be the favorite, uh, game of the younger set.
Yes, they like it.
Yeah, yeah.
New septic, no closer than seventy-five feet. The re-veg plan will include the lake access.
Lake access, right, definitely.
See, I didn't remember seeing that.
I think we did see it, but it really was not as significant.
Does it look so dangerous?
Yeah, there should be date stamped, the pictures.
I thought they had a black barn built it.
So there'd be really no grade change in that seventy-five feet, just the revegetation where the old camp is.
Right. Nothing with the stormwater because it's a pretty level thing. Isn't it basically only that?
No, that's part of the plan. She'll work with that number twenty is what it could do.
Get that, okay. So, um, any further discussion on this one? Okay. People entertain a motion? Yes?
Abstaining again.
Okay, entertain a motion to, uh, for the application? Take job two. You're so much better at it. I have a motion to accept the best practical location, um, permit with the following conditions.
No closer than seventy-five feet to the water.
No closer than seventy-five feet to the water.
The re-veg plan will also work with this water access area.
Yeah, with York County.
Yeah, new septic and no brading less than in that seventy-five foot.
Right.
Lake as well.
And again, Ken, do we have to address the shed?
The one behind it?
Hmm.
No, if they have to move it, then move it. That's, that's outside the hundred foot zone anyways.
Okay.
All in favor?
I'll second, I'll motion.
All in, okay. Three, two?
Three.
Three, zero, two.
Yeah.
This is on my paperwork. It left, moved that way.
Yes.
Here's one of them.
And...
Other one, the new one.
This is the new one. It's got the water pole, not the, other one has a double pole. No, no, he's got that.
It's our holiday schedule.
If we ever have a holiday. Uh, Craig, Bella?
You got an address?
Five forty-four East Shore Drive.
Five forty-four East Shore Drive. Map one, five, two, one, zero, two, three. Replace existing block pillars with a full foundation.
Yes, I don't know.
The property pin was right... The property pin was right over here, and originally, when we looked at this a while ago, they were going to demo the shed and the camp and put the shed into the house.
Yes.
Yeah, the other property line actually is about where this line is, right here, the black line. The neighbors on his property by a little bit over here. He didn't want to move it to the side because he's just going to be coming more and more on that. So now it's not a demo and rebuild, it's just jack up, save the old camp and put it on a new foundation. Uh, this shed is actually on some sort of sonotubes and foundations, and if we were to slide the house this way, it's going to hit the shed.
Is there anyone who will go back?
No, the septic is right behind it.
The septic's right there, and then the road's right there.
Definitely could use some revegetation.
All of the plants.
Yeah.
How old's the septic?
Um, ninety-eight, I think. So it's fairly reasonable. Exactly, because it's not used very often. So the septic's right in this area, right here, the tank and changers go right across from right in this area here.
Do we have a plot plan?
Uh, I don't have a certified plot plan, but.
It's definitely a small lot.
It's very small. Tiny.
About how many feet to the road from the back of the camp?
Oh. To the back of the camp?
The roadside of the camp, you mean? Yeah, on the roadside.
Roadside to the camp?
I always think the front of the camp would be on the lake. They, uh.
On the lake.
The road, from the roadside of the camp to the road.
Back of the camp, Eschore?
So driveway down to it, or is it right on the road?
No, it's right on the road.
Parking space off.
Yeah, and you have to go down this rocky staircase too, which is, shed is here, house is here. Now, like I said, if we said move this, it would be, it would be there, and I don't think there's more than, there's not even this much room between the properties. Yeah, it's very close on the sides.
Where's that?
That's a right away, right through here. Uh, backlogs use it, but everybody.
Who pays taxes on it?
Yeah, it looks like it's part of the road, as far as the breakout from it.
It's not the number.
Does it have a little ramp on it?
No.
No.
It's vegetated, really, nobody uses it.
Yeah, it doesn't look like anybody's used it in years, actually.
Fifty-eight feet, so.
Yeah, to the center, plus or minus some, so there's not a lot of movement. And the septic is all right.
The septic is right there. That doesn't show the shed, huh?
No, there's the shed right there.
Yeah.
It's hard to see that house where it's the down.
With the shed, you could walk from the house into the shed?
What, eight, nine feet between them?
That's it.
So they're not attached?
No, that's a little.
When is the shed though?
It looks like it's a structure, that's literally.
So since nineteen eighty-nine?
They literally look like this, okay? Like this.
Yeah, I can see it here, yeah.
Yeah.
So are they looking to do a walkout?
Uh, yeah, so it's going to be a walkout.
A walkout, I think. Underneath the building right now, you could see they have a bunch of canoes. Yeah, stored just on the ground underneath the. Kind of like a crosswalk. I'll do a, a whole camp, and you would see all the, if you looked in, you knew where the kitchen was, you knew the bathrooms were, all the pipes were, all the pipes were right there. Yeah, all the wall right there.
Yeah.
Ken, does that deck come across the whole front of the house?
Yeah.
There's only partway to go over there.
Yeah, there was like doors. So there were two, like two garage doors. Not?
The front view of it?
The front view of the house?
Front of the lake view.
Well, it's, it's that, that kind of wraps around.
Right there.
Right there. See, there's really not on the front. It looks like where the windows are over the top might have been part of the original deck, and then they closed that in to get more room, and they threw a deck on the sides.
So what's the new structure?
Uh, jacking this up?
Jacking it up.
Oh, they're not saving the key in.
So, and the foundation will include under the deck or not under the deck?
He had said partway under to gain some utility space, but by the state guidelines, you could do all underneath the, underneath that deck.
I think if we, if we beautify the yard, we'll be happy.
And that's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
So we want.
I got certified site plan, I'm still needing from them, York County water, soil, conservation district plan. Septic restricted it from back.
Yeah, the road too, I mean, eight feet, you could have moved it anyway.
Yeah, and then that's where is the middle?
And.
Right, the right way, or where the road is.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
You have plenty of time.
Right.
The road, yeah, I mean, where the right way is.
Exactly, and then it was fifty-eight feet.
Right, so that eight feet, they couldn't move that.
Right.
But the septic was right behind it.
But the septic is right there.
Right.
And the shed's on the foundation, so that restricted the left and right.
And the other side's.
And the other side is too close to the line.
Yeah, that's why I was hoping to slide it over a little, to get it off that line. But it is a, uh, right away going through there as well, so it's not like it is right on that.
But like you can see, with all, everything that's from in there, it's not somewhere that's used a lot.
Twenty-four.
Yeah. So that's probably part of the road, that right away.
It looks like it was as far as the plan.
Right.
No doubt about it.
Nothing.
And that's down. And go private road path.
You can see right there where the railroad's done.
Right.
So that's where you can pass with the time, yes.
Yeah. So we need to get a better, you need a plan though, correct?
Well, if you guys are okay with the location it's in, then I can just get the plan when we do the permitting.
Okay. Would we agree to that? Would we agree to the location? Then Ken will get the site plan when he gets.
If I get the site plan and the house is not on their property, if it's on the neighbor's lot or something, then I can bring it back.
Yeah.
Yeah, if there's changes.
Right, if there are any changes, okay? So. Again, I'm looking for a motion, because we do have other things to do tonight.
Make a motion to group the best practical location for five forty-four Eschore Drive.
The location that it's in now?
The location it's in now with the revegetation plan, um, from York County soil and water, and the other property needed, Ken.
Yeah, um, septic restricted it from moving it back, and the shed's on the foundation from moving it left and right.
And look at the site plan, Ken.
Yeah, I get that though.
And the.
What's my motion?
It can't move left, and it can't move right.
How many feet from the water is it now? Not a lot.
Not a lot. Let me say. Maybe twenty or something, or less.
There's none of those places up.
No.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna assume.
Twenty-one feet.
That that road, it was all the way through when it was laid out.
Yeah, no, closer than twenty-one feet.
When, when the road was laid out, I assume that was all laid out by Swan. And whatever the easement is for Eschore Drive, that easement would continue all the way down through what was subdivided by Swan. So if it's a fifty-foot easement down through there, the minimum would be thirty-four.
Right.
Yeah.
And.
Looks like we have this twenty.
Yeah, and I don't think that would be it, Ken.
No.
You know what I mean? That obviously was all a Swan development.
All right, well, we have a motion on the table, my second. Second, any further discussion? All in favor? And the. Count remains the same.
Consistency is important.
Very much, especially for the person doing the minutes.
Yeah.
Three, zero, two.
Yeah, the, the. She will be very thankful. Okay. Go on to new business. And looks like we've been told to discuss a planning board holiday meeting schedule. Now.
We've been told, uh, looks fine to me.
Looks like it's what we had planned anyway. We have a workshop next week. No time?
I'm in Livingston next week, so.
You are?
Oh, no, Wednesday, I'm good.
Okay, good. I'm glad, because we meet without you.
Yep.
Um, and on the nineteenth, we have a planning board meeting. I know that Mr. Prowling will be with us, our newest member. Do you know your, um.
I'll be here.
You will be here?
I'll be here, yeah. Seventeenth is my last day.
Oh, okay, so.
Last day working.
Yeah, that's the last Christmas party.
Last Christmas party, okay, so that gives us, um.
I'll be also Christmas at it by then.
Good. That, that gives us a lot. Now, some of the things we have to do. The Director of Planning, discussing proposed ordinance, zoning ordinance drafts.
What you call a draft? A graph?
Draft.
Oh, draft.
Yeah. You know, like in a pilsner, a draft?
Well, we know we have to change the definition for, um, forestry, is it?
For forestry.
We know we have to do that.
We have to do that, we have to take out anything that has to do with silver culture. Uh, the state doesn't want us to have anything to do with silver culture anymore. Silver culture, the art of Brian Forest. And it's called silver culture. We are still looking for another member. Hopefully that will go out soon.
So we are meeting the nineteenth?
We are meeting the nineteenth. In January, we're meeting the, um, have you looked at that yet? I believe I.
Yeah, no, I'm just, Arnie's going to be here on the second meeting, January.
Yeah. Are we meeting, uh, January second?
What things? I mean, you're, uh.
Should be recovered by then.
I'm still rolling, maybe.
Um, I have us down as, um, with a question mark, so, uh, I will ask those present, are we meeting January second?
Sure.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here. I'm here, you're here?
Yep.
You're here, Ken, are you here?
Yep.
We are meeting on the second. We will have a workshop on the eighth. Sixteenth, I will not be here, okay, but that's a regular meeting. Twenty-second is a workshop. And the, um, first and third are our regular Thursday meetings. And now I'm going to ask you to look at the thirtieth. Because one of the issues we have, we know that we're going to have Youngs Ridge coming back in. And there are two other lodger things coming in, where's it, seven point?
Four point eight megawatt solar plant.
Solar farm coming in. We may or may not see doggy rescue. If they come back or not, I mean, they're doing things on their thing, they're getting their other permits and licenses with the state and all that. But we are, we can't get into what we've been in in the last month or so, while we're here till ten-thirty at night. And we may want to take a, do things a different way. And then we may, this might be a time when we want to schedule five weeks in a month, we may want to schedule, you know, there are five Thursdays. We may want to schedule that third meeting that month. And take one big issue at that particular meeting. I mean, obviously, starting earlier was a big no for us, but to, um, to keep things going, uh, it, it may be the way to do it. Otherwise, we will see ourselves meeting four times a month. And, and for volunteer board, I think it's, it's a lot. But if we are open-minded to, to use, uh, you know, it would be, yes, it would be three meetings in one month, but it's been over five weeks, so it's not every single Thursday, you know?
Another problem that we've, we've got choices is we need to look seriously at some of the changes we've talked about it. In ordinances, for example, we've talked about docks. You know, I mean, the docks that we have in our ordinance, but in a sense, the way we're doing business, the town's doing business, it, it's really enforceable. Because that alone is countless hours of research, and who puts in the dock without a permit, and when do they do it, and how big it is, and I'm kind of leaning towards that we ought to get out of the dock business completely, and just let the people deal with DEP when they want to put docks in.
Temporary docks.
Temporary docks.
Yeah, so all removed during the non-voting season.
And, you know what I mean? It's like, it's one thing to have the ordinances, but if you can't enforce them because you don't have the staff, uh, or the finances to do it, then
Well, that brings up.
Why should we have?
Well, that, that brings up the other good thing that I was going to say. Last week, we, or our last, last meeting, two meetings ago, we went through the good neighbor policy.
Yeah.
There was so much that had much ado with nothing on that. It has to become its own.
It didn't even seem like it was connected to our ordinance, there's a lot of stuff.
Uh, we have to go through it, it's going to have to be garbage in and garbage out. Uh, does it belong on there, does it belong, uh, do we need to change the place of some of the things? Does some of it belong in shoreline, does some of it belong, you know, somewhere else?
A lot of it was in site plan review.
And a lot of it was in site plan review. But a lot of what was in there for site plan review had nothing to do with it. So we've got to work on that, because it, it is January.
And it takes more time to go through this stuff, when it's really, most of it's really not necessary.
Right, yeah.
Well, the other problem is too, where it's in the zoning ordinance, you can't waive it.
Yeah, we can't waive this.
It says you have to do this, and that you can't waive it. So if we're able to take site plan review, conditional use, good neighbor, and put that into its own document that the lane use chart refers you to, then. the land use chat refers you to, then you've got the ability to waive it without going through zoning board.
Right. And the other thing that came up that we are, need to, we've skirted around it for some time. And this may have to be at a Wednesday meeting, but what we do have Wednesday gets brought through to the following Thursday. Is regulations on short-term rentals in Airbnb's. You know, one day, two day, a weekend, a week. Conveyors is, uh, or New Hampshire is having quite a time with it. And I, and I think some of their things from what I'm reading, is that, um, short-term rentals don't have the same amount of, uh, they just don't care as much about the property, about, uh, who said beer cans, you know, about, especially in, in the shoreline zone. What, what's going on?
Usually they're just loud.
Sorry?
Usually they're just loud.
I know, there's, there's more than that.
Yeah.
There's more. I live, I live on a road where they do a lot of rentals.
Right.
Because we're a private road and the, the renters come in and, and race up and down the road, they don't care if they, they tear it up.
Right.
Car works go off until three o'clock every morning, every single weekend, there, there's a lot of
A lot of...
Issues that, that I would see that you wouldn't necessarily see just because of where we live.
Things like contractor yards, are they permitted? Are they not? Home businesses in the shoreline, in the shoreline zone, what about that? Dennis brought up, uh, dogs. You know?
Marijuana.
Marijuana.
The state's, no, the, well, the bottom line, the, the state is close to
Yeah.
Making the thing, is today?
Today's the day they give out the...
The application, the, the application hit right site, yeah.
So, we have nothing. We had this year-long moratorium, which must be about our that moratorium.
Well, I don't know if it's a mark, it's what we pass stays until somebody comes and says, I want to, you know, change this.
Are you sure?
I'm sure.
I, I understand what you're doing. Moratorium is in place until it's changed.
Right.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, if I went to the state, they won't do this in San Francisco, they talked to us about this.
Yeah.
And I got a caregiver's license, it costs three...
That's different.
Well, it costs three hundred dollars, wait a minute now.
Oh, go ahead.
I can sit out here right now and sell the marijuana to anybody that is licensed to have it.
What do you mean, right up here?
Right up here in the town.
Right.
As a caregiver.
As a caregiver.
And you can rotate your customers.
Because they, they shot that down, I mean, they shot everything down other than personal.
You have to opt-in?
Yes, we haven't opted in in this town.
Right.
For retail sales or adult use, but...
I'm just afraid we're gonna get caught.
It's the big loophole for it all.
We're gonna get caught.
We're gonna get caught.
I mean, did you, did you watch the news today about it?
No, I tried not to, I just watched, watched.
Because they took that, you know, the, the, the applying for the permits still need town approval.
Right.
Before they can set up shop.
They can't set up shop. The other thing is no approval with the town.
But the thing that's gonna cost a big push.
Down in Sanford, we went to that meeting, they have a big problem with it.
Big problem, huge.
On Main Street.
But they didn't probably go and, and make these changes like we did.
But what happens when the feds change the law?
This is my problem, I don't trust them, yeah.
The feds are changing the law.
I know, and then it's gonna be a whole other thing.
And, and that's it, and we are gonna be caught.
By cable.
Oh, yeah. We're gonna be caught really...
So you feel you need to get a big guy?
If, if the feds change the law and we're not in compliance, they, they, they tell you, you will be in compliance.
Well, the town, they, it's, but, it's just, the point, the point, yeah, but it's not done.
Because then we need to start having rules and regulations.
Because you need to have your regulations.
You know, you're gonna have to take our own...
You need to have your regulations in place, we need to be working on it.
If, if you're living next to one of these grow operations right now,
I'm sorry?
If you're living next to one of these grow operations right now in town, where people live, like me, for example, it doesn't bother taking any of that stuff. It's a hell of a stench that comes off that property over on my property.
Of course.
And whether it's a moratorium or whether there's a, whatever, we, there's a town, we need to do something.
We, we, we need to start, well, that's exactly what it is. Where can you grow it if you're gonna do this? What, what kind of thing?
Would you do it in zoning?
In zoning or something?
If you're a caregiver, you can do it right at the house, you can't touch them.
No.
Caregivers, you cannot, you, you can't do anything.
But you've got to...
And you can't do anything with the people that are doing that, whatever, there's three or six.
No, I appreciate that.
Right.
But we have quite a few places in town that's grown commercially.
And, and as caregivers?
As caregivers.
As caregivers.
Yeah, there's a distinction that's...
I appreciate that, but they're licensed to the state to grow the stuff for medical purposes.
Don't they, don't they have to need all of the others on the, oh, true, the, the good neighbors?
We don't have anything, that's what we're saying, we don't have anything saying that.
Legally, it's...
Well, there's the level...
But they, but like the older, do we have something in our ordinances about older at the property line?
But that, that also is seasonal, so...
And the zoning ordinance...
Depends what stage it's at.
Well, if you're a caregiver, you're, you're gonna be...
No, no, I'm saying if you're, if you're a, a, a producer.
But the interior's just...
You're growing all the time for people.
Well, that's one problem about that. You know, I've been, it, it's terrible, it's all like a freaking...
Dead smoke.
Dead smoke, angry smoke. You know, and no matter what direction we go in, I think we just do need to be prepared.
Look at the, look at the meeting plan.
But it is, it is good to be prepared.
How do we make regulations for, we don't even know what the town wants to do?
That's what I was saying, the marijuana alone this year, because we've got four workshops and what we just talked about, and that bit. We got other stuff, it's easier to crap with, to deal with.
We don't know what the town wants to do, so...
Exactly, yeah, it changes every day at the state level.
Oh, we do know, because the marijuana committee went and thought fifty percent of the people want it uh, just out there, so who cares? And fifty, the other fifty percent doesn't want any of it.
And then what was the vote on the moratorium, what were the percentages?
Oh, I don't know.
How many people voted in favor of the moratorium?
Hardly, I mean, it, it just squeezed by.
Yeah. It was, it was that close?
It was, yeah.
I, I really don't know.
It was a forty-eight, fifty-two kind of vote.
Yeah, it was a very close vote.
Yeah.
We did that just to, you know, figure out what the townspeople wanted, and then when they did the vote to say, you know, I'm gonna grow it, we're not doing this, we're not opting in.
But the moratorium was to give the town a chance.
Give us time to get that community together, to get us some information.
And, and get things uncovered under our ordinances. And my only point is, and I agree with what Ken, we got a lot to do here, but nobody's done anything.
I would say it's a subcommittee, the planning board could break into a subcommittee and just do the marijuana law.
Yeah, because that's gonna be it.
Because you're gonna start researching what these other towns have done and...
What works, what doesn't work.
Yeah, yeah.
And the town has a lot of work done, it's helping out that.
Carol went through it all, and, and with, with the, the people on the the marijuana committee, they researched other towns, other states.
Do you even have to do...
Yeah, this must be a war.
We don't allow it in this town, we don't allow commercial, we don't, we don't allow retail, we're, we're not allowing testing. We don't allow any of that in this town, it passed. The only thing in this town right now is, okay, you, you get your caregivers, which you can't, you can't, you know, regulations, nothing on them.
Yeah, that's five or six plants, from five to six.
Then the personal plants, that's it. Do, so...
How would you even know what to research? How would you even know? I mean, you don't know what the town is going to approve ultimately, so how would you even know how to go about writing any, any regulations? But you don't know what the town wants.
What to say, I'm all of it.
Can I go back to, so these are like workshop ideas, right?
Yeah.
So your question was, should we have three meetings in January?
Forget the workshop part. Oh, yeah, I think we may need three.
But how much notice do you need, like if we have our second meeting in May, whoa, like, okay.
That would be enough notice.
That's plenty of things, two weeks.
Because it seems, you know, it's really hard to predict, because Arnie could come back and say,
Got another person.
Yeah, or something, so, like, because there's some nights we think we're gonna be here till ten-thirty and then boom, it goes quick, and other nights, you know, they don't have...
But there are other things that we should be doing as, as a committee that we really don't have the time to do, and that's ordinance changes.
Is that outside workshop you're talking about?
We should do that, as many of those as we can. I mean, if we're done at eight o'clock, we should be working till at least nine o'clock to get those ordinance things done. Because we have that to get them done, because they have to go to town meeting. So we have to be done by February, March at the latest.
Well, let's let me not say in January.
I'll say in January, you know. So, and that's liaison.
So what we need to do is...
Oh, yeah, we always are.
We always are, but, but we, we try to, we try to talk to our liaison, but we need these to appear, you know, on it, and, and do that. And that's what I mean, we need to be, to take time to do that part of our job.
Hopefully, the, uh, between the next workshop and the next planning board meeting, we'll keep the schedule light as far as work and, and concentrate on the what we just talked about, forestry, dogs,
Yeah.
contractor yards. Short-term rental's gonna be a huge issue. What do you call short-term? Less than a week? Or less than, the, those are usually your bigger problems are weekend rentals.
Weekend rentals is what I think.
Yeah. Short-term, less than seven days?
Yeah.
Prohibited, got it, next one. Z P A.
They enforce that with the dark, Ken.
Yeah. Right there.
Oh, your managers will be the ones writing that.
Well, you want to get a badge for Yoli? Because she's the one who has the nicest look about her, they won't shoot her when she goes to the door. So look at that, hey, they...
A lot of the stuff we've been doing at the workshops, at the meetings, it's been so full that we haven't been, that's a lot of the stuff that we...
Exactly.
We've got to start drafting and...
You gotta get verbiage, you break through the meetings, like, the meeting, it's so hard to make the verbiage, we tried to do it before, and everyone was like, oh, aim it for a button, or, you know, we like, swap over the words, if somebody brought a draft in and we have something to work with for the issue, then we could discuss that as opposed to trying to create the verbiage. It's gonna take more than an hour for us all to come up with the verbiage.
And, and those, those are only four of the things on the eight things that I have written down. And the, the other thing, we are waiting, we're waiting to hopefully receive a contract, are we not?
Yep.
From a planner who will come in on a, uh, agreed-upon contract time to, particularly with subdivisions, help us go through those. And, uh, you know.
So we've got a thousand dollars in the budget this year that he could help us with for little stuff, but anything else would just be out of the escrow from the applicants.
Right.
So instead of using Southern Maine Regional on the subdivision, I think go with somebody that we've got better control of.
Better control.
Why don't we look Southern Maine?
The last time they did our last one, uh, it was kind of the intern came down and it was a very small list, to me it wasn't as, as in-depth and comprehensive as it has been.
And what we paid for. Because we paid that.
Yeah, yeah.
They got us monthly too. So, uh, and, and, uh, you know, if we were getting, uh, Lee J or Mr. Shulaba all the time, but the intern, and I realize that everybody has to start somewhere, but, you know, and they're also, the planners are very good at, um, you know, the other issue looming over our head is every ordinance we have and any of these has to comply with the con-plan. Our con-plan is the law. And our con-plan is outdated. And they, they...
Well, that's where we bring to the selectmen, because we need to create a concrete planning committee.
Well, that might not always be it, because the state now is saying that the planning board gets...
The town.
Gets, it, it belongs to the planning board.
So we have to create a subcommittee to deal with it?
Well, we do, but there, there's...
There's no way we can do that, it's a regular meeting.
No, of course not, but the planners can come in, they can look at what you have. They can, they can look at all your ordinances, your various, you know, zoning regs, all of these things, look at your con-plan.
See the conflicts.
And see the conflict, see what fits, or say, okay, you've got to go out and find out your growth rate is so out of whack with what it really is. You know, uh, where people are, are going to work, it's nuts, you know. The salaries, the ages of people here. It, it doesn't, it doesn't match reality anymore. And I can tell, our committee is the only one, which we worked on last year, that has brought everything up to date where it says in the con-plan whose responsibility is to review, we're the only ones having, who have reviewed it. And I understand why, I mean, it's a real pain in the neck, I really understand why. And, you know, we'll have people throwing darts at us if we say, you've got to do this, and you've got to do that. Who has time? Well, we have to make time. But having a planner come in and, and break it down into little pieces.
To help us with it.
And to help us with it and take little bites of it out, that would make a lot of sense. And so it's, you know, how we spend our money when we're working on a specific thing, right, that's where the money comes from, you know, that particular applicant. But, uh, we have to get those things done.
So we, we wouldn't be able to use services like that until after July?
Till after, right, right.
We'd have to put it in a budget, get it through, so, and more in finance and...
And that's what it, but, but...
But we'd be able to get them to review the solar plant, the doggy daycare, the next revision or new application for the subdivision?
Right, yeah, those kinds of things, to review those. And, I mean, we haven't seen the doggy, we're calling it doggy daycare, yet.
Animal Rescue League.
Animal Rescue League place, but I mean, I mean, one of the things that I would like to say is, okay, yep, we'd love to have you, this is what we need you to do. By the way, one of your conditions is, when we have a dog in Acton that needs to be housed for a period of time, you're gonna take that dog for us. We're not gonna have to spend money to go to, what, Kennybug Port or something like that? Kennybug, where we have, uh, you know, when someone can't find a dog, or then we can't find the owner that, you know, have an order. But we can't get anything done when everything is piled up on top of us. So, um, we've got to be, which all goes back to why we may have a third meeting in January, uh, so we can sort of like things out. The other idea that I think is, I'm not sure how it works, is not having a room full of people because you're on tonight. You're on at seven o'clock, you're on at seven forty, you're on at eight-ten, so people could come in at a, a time and you're not having...
To sit there for an hour and a half.
Having people sit there for an hour and a half, you know, you're coming in at quarter night, you know.
It's hard to predict.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what the...
Well, the Slumton just did it this week.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah.
We could be sitting for ten minutes waiting for the next person.
That is, we, that I, I disagree with, we always have things to do.
Ten minutes, remember, they're gonna dig into the con-plan in ten minutes.
Well, not the con-plan, but we may be able to do some, you know, some other things that we need to do.
I'm just wondering, would make the meetings longer to do like that?
Well, the meeting's lost till they get over, that's, that's the thing, the meeting's lost...
We could schedule them and then we could just go with the pace we go at anyway, and then they wouldn't be waiting as long.
Exactly, exactly, you know, I mean...
Well, like the first relocation was an hour, it's like, a little over an hour.
A little, oh, yeah.
I don't think, I wouldn't, I would, I'd have booked him for thirty minutes.
Right, right. But even that...
Then they have, the next person would only have to wait half as long.
Yeah, the, the next person would only wait thirty, you know, thirty minutes.
Long as we're not waiting, I don't want to be waiting, because we scheduled them for an hour, and only took fifteen minutes.
No, no, but...
Well, to here, obviously you deal with it.
Right, you deal with them, but it's something to think about, to be, efficiency.
Well, we'll try and draft in some ordinances and start putting that together too as well.
Yeah, we gotta do the ordinances first, they really are the priority.
We gotta do the work to bring it in to...
Oh, pouring concrete's the priority right now for everybody.
Yeah, well.
It's hot, hate to tell you.
If they want to pour concrete, depending on where they're pouring it, I want them to lift it up and get it out of there, because, you know.
Placing concrete.
Oh, so placing concrete, okay, that's.
They're busy, they're working.
They're working.
They're working, yeah, well, you know, it goes in the snow, so, anyway, that's what's going on.
Just storing and sticking to it.
Hey, you know, I get paid as much as everybody else here except for you, but.
Oh, I'm on free time right now.
And he's on free time, so there we go.
I'll be on free time all day tomorrow too, so.
There you go.
There is no such a thing as free time, the only thing that changes can is your hourly rate drops.
Yeah.
Okay, for your hours, so when you started out at thirty dollars an hour, by the time you're done tomorrow.
You'll make time.
No, you'll be making seven.
That sounds like when I was self-employed and I underestimated the job. Yeah.
Exactly.
They want you to throw some more stuff in for free.
So thank you, everybody, one last thing I would say to you is, some of us who were here for the last Thursday workshop, we did a very cathartic thing. We went through our things like this. If you do not need paperwork that you have, don't keep it, all right? You do not need to be carrying other room subdivision with you, we have that here.
It's this last one.
We have, no, we have it here, we have, we have that here, we don't need to personally be carrying it. Just like I had, I was, you know, and this week Bob Lucini goes, I can't believe.
I totally know.
About this people's society. Well, I'll go, I'll just keep it till it's completely done, but, I mean, someone who remained nameless since, has everything since twenty-fourteen. Every piece of paper is computerized since twenty-twenty, I don't want to ask you, you might have, but don't forget, everything is here. And if we don't get a piece of paper that is not kept here, so, you know, go through that and make one piece here.
I cut my second half.
So, I know you all want to be here and I know we're done, so I'm just waiting for.
Second.
Ah, thank you, second, all in favor? Go, would you now?